Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order and welcome to the November 3 Muscatine City Council Meeting. Fran, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmembers Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Big.
Present.
Saseo.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Fran. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I better put me in charge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our throne.
Thank you for coming tonight. We're going to start our agenda tonight with asking if anyone is here in the audience that would like to speak to any subject that is not on tonight's agenda. Hearing nothing, we'll move forward onto the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight, which includes items 6A, items 8A through G, items 12A through C, and tonight's bill is totaling $3,358,332.57?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries with all ayes. Moving on the agenda, all the way down to 11A. First reading of an ordinance amending Title I Administrative, adding Chapter 14 adjudicative appeals and hearings. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance amending Title I Administrative by adding Chapter 14 adjudicative appeals and hearings. The addition of this chapter to the city code will establish the process for appeals and hearings before city councils such as tobacco violations, nuisance appeals, or other hearings. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Councilman Ray Walt, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just have a couple of questions. First of all, has the Muscatine City Attorney Matthew Brick of Brick Gentry seen and approved this ordinance?
This was recommended and prepared by the city attorney.
Was that in writing or verbally?
It was prepared by the city attorney.
Prepared by him, so he actually wrote the language.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have. Anyone else? Hearing nothing, Councilman Fred, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Bynum?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Nat Big?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Ray Walt?
Aye.
Motion carries with all ayes. Moving on to 11B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the annual appropriation for tax increment financing, or TIP, obligations for Wallview Development Project Number One. The city entered into a development agreement with Wallview Developments Limited Company, GSTC Logistics Incorporated, which provides for 10 years of TIP rebates to the company. The fiscal year 1718 rebate will be the third annual rebate under this agreement. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the annual appropriation for tax increment financing obligations for H.J. Heinz LP. The city entered into a development agreement with H.J. Heinz LP, which provides for five years of TIP rebates to the company. The fiscal year 1718 rebate will be the second annual rebate under this agreement. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Fred, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the annual appropriation for tax increment financing obligations for Wallview Development Project Number Two. The city entered into a second development agreement with Wallview Developments Limited Company, GSTC Logistics Incorporated, which provides for 10 years of TIP rebates to the company. The fiscal year 1718 rebate will be the first annual rebate under this agreement. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the annual appropriation for tax increment financing obligations for Union Tank Car Company. The city entered into a development agreement with Union Tank Car Company, which provides for 10 years of TIP rebates to the company. The fiscal year 1718 rebate will be the first annual rebate under this agreement. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Fred, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Ray Walt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11F. We have several different ones under 11F, so we will start with number one, a resolution authorizing an internal advance of funds for 1617 urban renewal administration and professional support program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Fred, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Ray Walt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Number two, under 11F. A resolution authorizing an internal advance of funds and economic development grant for Greater Muscatine Chamber of Commerce and Industry Support Program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
And Saseo?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Number three. A resolution authorizing internal advance of funds for small business forgivable loan program. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
And Saseo?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Number four. We have a resolution authorizing an internal advance of funds for community branding and marketing study. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Nat Big, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
And Fred?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Number five. We have a resolution authorizing the internal advance of funds for a housing demand study. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Scott?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Saseo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Nat Big?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11G. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on an ordinance amending Title X of the city code Flood Plane Management Regulations. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources has reviewed the city's flood plane regulations and is requiring changes be made to the city code in order for the city to be compliant with the standards contained within Title 44 Code of Federal Regulation 60.3. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, November 17, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
And Fred?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11H. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on a lease agreement with MLC Land Company, LLC. Staff has been working in cooperation with the developers of the new downtown hotel. As part of the hotel project, it is being proposed the city enter into a 99-year lease with MLC Land Company for a small portion of Mississippi Drive that is located in front of the hotel. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, November 17, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Harvey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Ray Walt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11I. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the building official to proceed with specified work on premises located at 519 Orange Street. A portion of the structure at this location has collapsed, excuse me, and has been declared a nuisance and unsafe for occupancy. All known owners with an interest were notified of the nuisance as required by city code. Staff will be soliciting bids for the demolition of this structure. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
When do we get the bids back for the quotes for the demo?
Good evening, councilors, and thank you for your question. We didn't move forward with the bid process until this has been approved. It's sort of like putting the cart before the horse if we did it that way.
So will it take two months, a month?
I don't believe it'll take two months, but probably as much as a month. It could take that long.
Okay.
Do you want it to be less than a month?
Just cold weather coming and just the nuisance that it is now is concerned?
I'd prefer to see it done sooner than later, but if I give you, if you say a month and I can do it in two weeks, then I'll look good. We'll all look good.
If we can do it in a month, that would be fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions while I'm up here?
Thank you, Dave. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Harvey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
And Fitzgerald?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year 1516. The state requires local governments complete and submit an annual report showing all activity with each of their urban renewal areas during the preceding fiscal year. The report included with this agenda is the updated information for fiscal year 1516. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11K. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the engineering master agreement for the municipal airport. Proposals were received from three firms. The review committee, made up of Carver, A. Carver Arrow representative, the Airport Advisory Commission chairperson, and city staff, has reviewed the agreement and unanimously recommends approval of an engineering and construction services agreement with Bolton and Mink Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, are these the T-hangers or what are they doing? I couldn't open this up, by the way, when we were on the line.
Good evening, council. So when we solicit for engineering services at the airport, we do it for more than just one project at a time. We use our five-year CIP, and we solicit engineering services for everything listed on that CIP, so we can use the same engineer for future projects as well. So the first project that this engineer will undertake is the T-hanger project, but there's future projects such as Taxiway, A reconstruction, future security updates, further hangar projects, and other projects listed on the CIP.
Okay, so we're going to be utilizing them for the next year, two years?
Five years.
Five years.
Yep. Now, we do have the ability, if we decide that there is a different firm that we want to go with, or want to try out a different firm, we can individually per project solicit requests for qualifications per project. So we do have some flexibility. Same thing with our runway reconstruction project. We were able to take over and manage some of the construction observation. We're able to do that same thing within this agreement as well.
This is the same group that's doing the Mississippi Drive?
Yes, yes. The Bolton and Mink is, yes. Previous firm was Anderson Bogart. They didn't submit us a separate submission. They submitted under a different firm, HDR, this time as well. Anderson Bogart was the number-two finalist last time we went out for similar RFQ in the process. That time we stuck with Anderson Bogart, but who had done the airport for...
Long time. Yeah, numerous years.
You feel comfortable with this group?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's nothing, Anderson Bogart does great work. They still have work at the airport that they're going to be continuing with. We will still have Anderson Bogart involved in work at the airport because they have that historical information of the airport, but I am very comfortable with Bolton and Mink moving forward with them.
Thank you.
They have a separate aviation division.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted his opinion.
Additionally, they have 20-plus airports across the state of Iowa that are very similar to Muscatine, so they really do have a really good experience and broad experience with airports like Muscatine.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Request is approved with all ayes. Moving on to 14 on our agenda. Councilman, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight? Councilman Bynum?
Yes, Mayor. Couple weeks ago, on a Tuesday night, a Friday night, in Ward Number Four, the railroad tracks were closed for 30 minutes as well as another 45 minutes. An email, Greg, I think was sent to you. Could you tell me what the status of the administration is?
My understanding is it's been blocked three times. We have a local contact with the railroad. And did you have any luck getting ahold of them at this point in time? We've been trying to get ahold of them. We have their emergency contact information. We've tried, the other day when we had the notice as well. We'll continue to work with them. We haven't had this issue before, and now, this is the third reported case that we've had in the past two months as well.
Is this at the switchyard? Is that what you're talking about?
No, they're blocking Sampson Road, was it? Was it Sampson that they were blocking? And this is the third time that it's happened, so we continue to work on it and make them aware of the issue. And Fire Chief shared the emergency contact information, but apparently without success, we're not getting a response back, so we continue to work on the issue.
My contact with the police department, the tickets for the stopping traffic was not related to the police.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Police did nothing to do with that.
No, it's solely railroad-related, and we continue to investigate, and we'll let you know as soon as we have something.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
What are our options in that case? Can we give them a ticket?
I've seen that done once in 18, 19 years, but not a whole lot. They are required to move the tracks, I believe, every 15 minutes, is it 10 minutes? Every 10 minutes. However, that does not necessarily mean clear the track. They do need to clear it, and they could go right back to it, so we are working on it. We have very little regulation over the matter, but historically, we have had good cooperative effort with them. We haven't had this issue until very recently, and so we'll continue to work on it, but there's very little authority that we have over the tracks. Biggest issue historically has been for emergency purposes and making sure that vehicles have access and emergency access, and certainly for the residents, certainly be waiting over there for a half hour or so. But very little regulatory authority, but we'll continue to work on it. We could bring the Office of Rail into the matter if we need to.
If it happens, it's called public works.
Yes, yes.
Do we recall whether they were blocking more than just Sampson at that time? You know, how long was the string of cars?
I understand the last time was one...
I believe the last time was multiple...
Multiple streets was my report.
I only had...
My complaint was two.
Okay, so multiple reports. I would encourage everybody so that we get consistent reports and make sure that everybody knows, just contact the Public Works Department. They have the emergency reporting information, but to contact the Public Works Department immediately and let us know, obviously, as soon as you know, and we'll continue to do it. Has not been a historic issue. We're not sure why it's going on. What's that?
That's the Navy Corps.
But it was not the police department.
What do you do when they do? Do you get ahold of the, try to get ahold of the engineer or the conductor or whoever's in charge?
Yeah, the two reports that I've heard, one time it was they blocked multiple intersections, the other time it was blocked one intersection. We got that report from a bus driver. Yeah, the contact information we have is the non-emergency number, which I've tried to call multiple times and got no response. Then there's the CP police that are supposed to be able to respond to that and that haven't gotten a response from them either. So they are allowed, per Iowa law, to, they can block a track for no more than 10 minutes at a time, and then they have to move the train or break the train, but they can move the train a couple of feet and start that clock over again. So typically, as Greg said, they've been working with us pretty well, but it has become an issue the last couple of weeks.
Can you do anything on-site, like ask the engineer to move it, or the switchmaster or whoever's in charge?
Well, we probably, we could ask. We haven't done that yet. The reports, when we get them, you know, it's happened, like one report I got, it happened days or a week before that. So if it happens, when it's happening, we've called the switch, or not switchyard, the CP police, and they've been able to move the train. We had a bus blocked the other day for about 30 minutes, and so it's an issue for everybody, but especially if they're blocking multiple intersections and there's no way out, then we have a big problem.
I know that would be frustrating, but if you go back 35 years, it's a daily occurrence. In fact, they could block the intersections all the way from Oregon, clear down past Sampson. I mean, you had to hole south and cut off.
I'm sure it has something to do with the switchyard there. I mean, most of everything that's there is where they're moving back and forth, so I bet if you did contact CP, I bet that's probably where it's coming from. They're probably just moving the train to set to move back in through there, which is probably going to some of the local companies and the employers down there on that side of town. It's just probably, is it, is it one lane's full or something? Who knows? Probably just some communications.
Not sure. It has not been an issue in recent history, so we'll continue to contact them.
I'm sorry. Under the state law, what's the penalty?
I don't know that there is a penalty. It's just a rule that they have to move it. I don't know if there's a penalty for that or not.
We will let you know as soon as we find out more.
But it's conflicted, be cleared for 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Councilman Bynum?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Fitzgerald, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Harvey?[1676.15]
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Saseo?
I had a question. This is something that had been mentioned to me in regards to, how do we address when contractors are in the, doing sewer work or isolating a street? I don't know who would be the contractor from, from this aspect, as far as when they block a road, which notification do they have to do to start blocking a main street? Hypothetically, I think this last week, Eighth Street was, was blocked, and then earlier in the week, Main Street, contractors were doing work, putting up a retaining wall, another one was a sewer, and there's really no, like, barricading that they put up, no signage, and people are just kind of going by either the contractors that are putting up, just people up there, or they're just trying to go and being polite without having any traffic accidents. I don't know if we have incidents, or I don't know if we have rules for that. And as far as when, you know, is Public Works who we contact? When those types of incidents or people contact me saying that, I don't know. That's what I'm asking, so I don't know who needs to come up here and tell me, or explain to me if we have any rules or obligations or requirements that the city puts in place for local contractors that will isolate a street.
Historically, we have not, but we do have a new permit requirement under the city code that was adopted July first.
This year?
Last year.
Okay.
And are they going through the community development or Public Works? Are they, community development?
Excavation.
Excavation permits for work in the right-of-way are going through the community development office. So, Dave, what's up?
Which is opposed to, I won't tell you what I don't know. They come through the community development office for a excavation permit.
Okay.
We work with the Public Works Department to get them to sign off and whatnot, but to block a street has to go through council. So we're not aware if that's the case. Well, you had one on there tonight, under the consent agenda, for example.
Correct.
When they're going to block a street, it has to have council approval. And, for example, the discussion that you just had was a surprise to me. I didn't know about it. No one here on the council knew about it, if that's the case.
So if, if...
If they're closing the, closing the entire street.
Let's say mid, let's say mid-January, mid-January, somebody on Eighth Street has a water sewer break. It's a Saturday. They have to go to the main header, which is to our sewer main, hypothetically, they're not going to get approval through us, they're just going to go right to the main sewer, which is going to go right to the same spot. What I'm trying to get at is...
Not for emergencies, but for normal excavation, there is a permit process that they have to follow, and if they're going to close off the street, they have to get, they have to get prior approval from council, the entire street. If they're going to be working in the right-of-way or in the street, there is a permit process that they must follow.
In other words...
And really, it's so that we know, at a bare minimum, we know where work is being done within the right-of-way, and we can confirm that the work in this, and that the right-of-way and the street are being put back in an appropriate condition.
Okay. And I'm not so concerned, I mean, I'm happy that they're doing the work, which is great, which is an emergency. My concern is more around the safety, that, that there's not any blockage, any signage, and maybe the contractors don't have, you know, the orange cones, which would be great if the Public Works or somebody could say, hey, you know what, when you sign up and you're going to do this work, here's a couple signs that we know that there's going to be one-way traffic coming up here in the middle of the road, or we're going over this curve, and we don't know this is happening. I mean, it seems like that was the consistency that I was seeing that was challenging when I got the call and I went out there, and I was like, oh, okay. So it was just something that I, I don't know how we do that, but if we do have an ordinance, or what'd you say that was a?
Permit, we do have a permit process.
Permit that we require.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's for excavation. If there is already a manhole and they're going down in that for some reason, they do definitely need to, most contractors, I can't think of one that wouldn't barricade it off, but we're talking about half a street, not the full street. And half a street, you don't have to have, it's, yeah.
Let's take, we can take a look at the perm, I haven't looked at the permit for a while, we take a look at the permit, make sure that there are safety measures included on the permit.
Yeah, and I'm just more around just wanting to make sure that we have either, we're giving them proper signage, or there's an ability that we, you know, it's more around safety and avoiding the accidents is all I'm after, and maybe if we can say, hey, you know what, you come here, you put a sign out here that one-way traffic's coming, that would be helpful for us.
We can certainly look at the, at the permit, but OSHA, they're going to have OSHA requirements regarding safety and personal protection requirements to working in the right-of-way, so on top of ours, but we should look at that permit as well.
I understand, there's just certain, certain groups that I'm just trying to address, I just want to make sure.
If they're following OSHA guidelines.
Correct, correct, correct. I mean, if somebody's doing a sidewalk, somebody does a street, something like that.
If you see something, though, feel free to give us a call, and we'll follow up.
So who do they call? Do they call Public Works or Community Development?
They can call.
Because they ain't going to call me, I'm going to try to tell them to call you.
The permit is issued through Public Works, but it would most likely be Public Works that would go out on site, so they can call, just call the Public Works or the Community Development Office.
Call the Public Works, okay.
Absolutely.
I'm good.
Let's be clear. If it's in the right-of-way, which is the street, then it would be a Public Works issue. They have full...
Well, these were cutting concrete, I know that, I saw that that was on there right there.
If it's on the side of the street, into the, headed towards the home or wherever it's going, now we're talking about different jurisdictions.
Yep.
Still public right-of-way.
Greg, what do you do if an issue comes up, like on a weekend, where, who do you call?
If it's an emergency.
Hmm?
If you're aware of an issue?
Yeah, you know, you said, well, call Public Works or call Community Development. What do you do on a weekend?
You can contact the police department, the police department has the emergency contact for Public Works.
Have we ever had a problem where somebody, contractor, small, big, or whatever, just starts digging without permission?
Gee, no, that never happens.
Okay. I figured it'd happen, so what do we do? What's the city do in those cases?
The last one I can think of was, was a sidewalk, where they had done some work in the right-of-way in the sidewalk, and they put the sidewalk back in a very poor condition. They did not put the appropriate ADA panel back in, or it was done extremely poorly. We made, we got ahold of the firm and made them repair and replace the entire section that they, they put in. So the penalty is to put it in correctly.
Okay, they don't face a fine or anything like that?
There is no, there is no fine.
That's a pretty good, years ago, we did a, there was a foundation on a building that they put in on the south end, and the report was that it wasn't adequate, it had been caving in while they were pouring, and the city made it, we, the council, made the contractor tear it out, and the footing was anywhere from four foot to about six inches deep, and the owner was then pleased with the city. Prior to that, he wasn't real happy.